If I could get everyone to take their seats, we'll call this meeting to order. Ms. Whitby?
Yes, sir.
Call the roll. Taylor?
Ross?
Here.
White?
Here.
Taylor?
Here.
Robinson?
Here.
Baxter?
Here.
Harris?
Here.
Height?
Here.
Witcher?
Present.
Thank you very much. I invite you to rise for prayer and pledge led by Councilmember Baxter.
Let's bow. During the Father, Lord, we just thank you for this day and the many blessings you bestow upon us. We're so thankful that we got to pause momentarily and just remember each and one, every one of those blessings last week, Lord, but just ask that you'd let heavy on our heart to remember them each and every day. We just ask as we go throughout this meeting, Lord, that you would give us a open mind. Let us share our wisdom, give us the wisdom. We just ask that you'd oversee this meeting in the way that you'd see fit, Lord. Give us where we fail you for all these things. Use His name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge this witness to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
So moved.
Second.
On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
Witcher?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much. Let's go into Communications. I'm showing one. Anybody want to pull it? Seeing none, how about a motion?
Move, accept and file.
Second.
On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
Witcher?
Yes.
Okey doke. Unfinished business?
Do we have someone that signed to speak?
Yes, I'm sorry. Looks like we've got Kevin Brown, Jr. that wants to talk about 18221. Oh, okay. Well, this is, is this on a condemnation? Okay. Once you have a seat and I'll call you back up when we get to that particular legislation, okay? Okay, unfinished business.
R-18210, Mayor Smith?
Hold it, please.
Oh, 1890, Mayor Smith?
Hold it, please.
New business?
Yes.
R-18218, Mayor Smith?
Call it, please.
Resolution reappointing Jeremy White to the North Little Rock Housing and Building Board of Adjustment and Appeals. Sign board?
Move for adoption.
Second.
On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
Witcher?
Yes.
The, let me thank Jeremy in advance for his past service and his future service. Jeremy's one of our youngest, under forty for sure, maybe under thirty-five. And, you know, I found something interesting today. I want to share it with you. I was in Jonesboro for a regional municipal league meeting and we were talking about legislative stuff most of the time, but when I have a crowd, I always talk about, you know, the younger generation and trying to get appointing new people to commissions and so on and so forth. After the meeting, I had several people come up to me and talk to me about it. One, one man, he was the mayor of Bono, Arkansas, which is right outside Jerusalem, Jerusalem, right outside Jonesboro. And he told me that of their eight city council members, that four of them were under the age of thirty-two. I thought that was very interesting. So, and they all agreed that it's good to have the diversity. That's why we have the young people on our, all these young people on my right over here. So, thank you very much. Okay, 219, call it.
A resolution declaring certain city-owned items and other equipment as surplus, providing an auction thereof.
For adoption.
Second.
On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And then Witcher?
Yes.
R-18220, Mayor Smith?
Please call it.
A resolution extending the current agreement with Apple Tree Service Incorporated for vegetation removal services for the North Little Rock Electric Department?
Move for adoption. Second.
On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
Witcher?
Yes.
R-18221, Mayor Smith?
Okay, what I'm going to do right now is I'm going to call a public hearing for all these condemnations. So, let me call the public hearing. I'm going to list the addresses and then we'll have you come up, okay? 900 North C Street, 808 North E Street, 5502 Chiquita Road, 519 Middle Street. So, if there's anyone here that wants to speak on any of these addresses, please come to the microphones. Okay, and you're speaking on 221, which is 900 North C. Okay, identify yourself, please.
I'm Kevin Brown, Jr.
Okay. Okay.
inherited property. It's actually my grandmother's property. She inherited it to me. And I believe it's been listed as a nuisance.
Right, public nuisance and condemning the structure.
Yes, sir. I'm really wanting to ask for an opportunity to be able to get the property together. It was originally, a lot of my family was involved and up to this point, they were involved. But now it's become a concern, so they kind of turned it over to me to go ahead and do what I need to do.
Okay.
So far, I've actually, since this has been called, I've replaced the roof this Saturday. I'm going to do some more work to it as well. I'm figuring in about six months, I'll be able to redo the house in full and have everything up to par.
And let me tell, we have a system-
Yes, sir.
-that's in place for situations just like this.
Yes, sir.
What is required is that you have to come and meet with our city attorney-
Mm-hmm.
-and she will work out an agreement with you that you'll agree to do this, this, and this.
And you have to put up a bond stating that you will do all this and if you do not do it, then you forfeit the bond and then the bond money would be used to tear it down. Okay.
So, we have a system. So, what we'll do tonight probably is vote to condemn it and then tomorrow, the next day, go and sit down with our lawyers and they'll draw up an agreement and then you'll have to put up a bond in order to give yourself time to renovate the house.
And Mayor, on this one, before we get too much farther, Mr. Wadley and I have spoken. Mr. Brown, the city only became aware right when this legislation was filed that Mr. Brown was the record owner of the property. He has a deed from 2013, but it wasn't recorded with the Plasky County Real Estate records until late October. And so, both Mr. Wadley and I would like to ask for this one to be held so that appropriate notice can be given to Mr. Hart because we didn't realize at the time because his deed wasn't filed that, that he was the owner of the property. And so, we want to make sure we have all our ducks in a row and have given him the notice that's required under the statute.
All right, so it changes a little bit. We're going to hold this legislation tonight and we won't call it, okay? So, what you should do tomorrow, Tom, help me, he should come to your office?
Yeah.
All right, go, go see Mr. Wadley in the back at our Code Office over on 29th Street?
Yes, sir.
And see if you can work out an issue with them and then they'll tell me to pull this legislation at the next meeting.
Yes, sir.
Okay? So, Mr. Wadley, Code Enforcement is your next step.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you for your time, sir.
Mr. Taylor?
Well, that was my question. Should we, should we be holding the legislation or should we be pulling it since we, we haven't given proper notice, but?
Actually, if, if, Mayor, if you wouldn't mind, you are the sponsor of this to withdraw it so that Code does have the time to give the notice and we're not having this in old business for an indeterminate amount of time. Thank you, Mr. Taylor.
Okay, thank you. Same goes. Talk to Code.
Thank you for your time.
Ms. Ross?
Just a question on this because I, we haven't had this come up before as far as the owner. So, if someone purchased a house and they never record the deed, that's what happened. And so, then we do not know who the owner is.
Then we don't have any way of knowing. But when I was looking at the property records as we were getting this legislation ready to be filed, that's when I discovered that just within, you know, less than a month ago, that the deed had been filed. I should have gotten in touch, it was the end of the week, I should have gotten in touch with Mr. Wadley then and we should have discussed it then instead of going ahead and filing it, but?
Okay. Anybody else here to talk on any of those? Mr. Baxter?
Well, a question about this. So, since there's no legislation pending, this doesn't preclude him from going down and getting a, a permit to perform work on the structure, right?
Right.
Right.
Okay.
Tom?
I believe you already have it from there. He's going to run in. I already have it.
All right, well, ball's in your court.
Sure.
Okay. All right, anybody else here to speak on any of those other addresses? Seeing none, close the public hearing. Let's call R-18221 and I'm going to withdraw that. Okay?
R-18222, Mayor Smith?
Please call it.
A resolution declaring certain buildings, houses, and other structures located at 808 Northeast Street in the city of North Little Rock, Arkansas, to constitute a public nuisance and condemning said structure, providing a period of time for property owner to abate said nuisance.
Move for adoption.
Second.
On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
Witcher?
Yes.
R-18223, Mayor Smith?
Please call it.
A resolution declaring certain buildings, houses, and other structures located at 5502 Chiquita Road in the city of North Little Rock, Arkansas, to constitute a public nuisance and condemning said structures, providing a period of time for property owner to abate said nuisance.
Move for adoption.
Second.
On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
Witcher?
Yes.
R-18224, Mayor Smith?
Please call it.
A resolution declaring certain buildings, houses, and other structures located at 519 Middle Street in the city of North Little Rock to constitute a public nuisance and condemning said structures, providing a period of time for property owner to abate said nuisance.
Move for adoption.
Second.
On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
Witcher?
Yes.
R-18225, Mayor Smith?
Okay, let's hold it just for a second. We'll call a public hearing on cleanup liens and I will read the addresses. 116 South Spruce, 120 South Spruce, number 32 Wright Circle, number 1901 East Washington Avenue, and 2221 East Washington Avenue. Is there anyone here to speak on any of those addresses on cleanup liens? Seeing none, close the public hearing on the most, on 18225, please call it.
A resolution certifying the amount of a cleanup lien to be filed with the Plasky County Tax Collector against certain real property located at 116 South Spruce Street in the city of North Little Rock, Arkansas.
Motion.
Second.
On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
Witcher?
Yes.
R-18226, Mayor Smith?
Please call it.
A resolution certifying the mayor, I'm sorry, a resolution certifying the amount of a cleanup lien to be filed with the Plasky County Tax Collector against certain real property located at 120 South Spruce Street in the city of North Little Rock, Arkansas.
So moved.
Second.
On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
Witcher?
Yes.
R-18227, Mayor Smith?
Please call it.
A resolution certifying the amount of a cleanup lien to be filed with the Plasky County Tax Collector against certain real property located at 32 Wright Circle in the city of North Little Rock, Arkansas.
So moved.
Second.
On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
Witcher?
Yes.
R-18228, Mayor Smith?
Please call it.
A resolution certifying the amount of a cleanup lien to be filed with the Plasky County Tax Collector against certain real property located at 1901 East Washington Avenue in the city of North Little Rock, Arkansas.
Move for adoption.
Second.
On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
Witcher?
Yes.
R-18229, Mayor Smith?
Please call it.
A resolution certifying the amount of a cleanup lien to be filed with the Plasky County Tax Collector against certain real property located at 2221 East Washington Avenue in the city of North Little Rock, Arkansas.
Move for adoption.
Second.
On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
Witcher?
Yes.
R-18230, Mayor Smith?
Please call it.
A resolution approving and certifying amounts of liens to be filed with the Plasky County Tax Collector against certain real property in the city of North Little Rock, Arkansas, as a result of grass cutting expenses and abatement of other nuisances.
Move for adoption.
Second.
Call a public hearing. Anyone here to speak on the amount of liens to be filed in Plasky County against certain real properties for grass cutting expenses and abatement of other nuisances? Seeing none, close the public hearing. On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
Witcher?
Yes.
Oh, 1891, Mayor Smith?
Please call it.
An ordinance reclassifying certain property located at the northeast corner of MacArthur Drive and Candid Lane from R2 to I-1 by amending ordinance number 7697 of the city of North Little Rock, Arkansas, adopting an amended land use plan for the subject property, declaring an emergency. First reading.
Move to spend readings.
Second.
Second.
On the motion to suspend all readings.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
Witcher?
Yes.
On the emergency?
No, one more time. Read it one more time.
So moved.
In a second?
Move for adoption.
All right, we got a second. End of motion. On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
Witcher?
Yes.
On the emergency? Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
Witcher?
Yes.
Oh, 1892, Councilmembers Ross and White?
Please call it.
An ordinance vacating and abandoning a portion of right-of-way located on Old West Thirteenth Street between Main Street and Mo Pack Railroad right-of-way in the city of North Little Rock, Arkansas, declaring an emergency.
Move to spend the readings.
About a second.
Second.
Motion to suspend all readings. On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
Witcher?
Yes.
About a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Ross?
Hold it.
I'm sorry.
Give me a second. We got a second for Mr. Baxter. On the motion.
Oh, Mayor?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
I'm sorry.
What are we doing?
On what?
On this. What is this?
On Thirteenth, the old Thirteenth Street?
Yeah.
Uh, okay, I'll go back up here to the little letter. Is John Panell here?
You just give me the Cliff Notes.
Okay. Was where the old Argenta School was built?
Yeah.
On the plat in 1882, I think it was, it was known as Second Street. And then it was known as Old Thirteenth Street and the school was basically built over that old portion of the road. And when you cross the railroad tracks, it kind of turn, beers off. At one time, it was a straight shot there. So, this is something that they found after Terraform bought it, so they're just trying to clean it up.
Do you have a copy of that plat?
I, what have we got? I think we've got the map in here.
If you look at the map on Exhibit B, it shows where the road is on the old plat and, and how it, the school is on top of it.
Yeah, they built the school over the-
I love it.
Yeah, it was very interesting.
I'm a real estate guy, so this stuff is always intriguing to me.
It was very, yeah, it took me a while to, I never understood why that curve was there, but now I do.
You good, Mr. Taylor?
Thank you.
On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
Witcher?
Yes.
On the emergency? Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
The, let me jump in here real quick. Mr. Jacuzzi, your legislation was approved. You're good to go. Go out there and make good things happen for us, okay? You bet. Okay, oh, 1893.
Councilmember Harris?
Please call.
An ordinance allowing a special use for a daycare center in an I-2 zone for certain real property located at 12 Mall Mel Curve Court in the city of North Little Rock, Arkansas, declaring an emergency.
Move to suspend the readings.
Second.
On the motion to suspend all readings?
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter? Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
Witcher?
How about a motion?
So moved.
Second.
On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
We good?
Emergency.
Emergency?
Close.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
Witcher?
Yes.
Concludes new business.
Thank you very much, just going into public comment, Mr. Arndt.
Murray, when you leave, will you get your new person sitting in your seat to say, "Present"? Hopefully Charlie will do that.
I'm training him.
I have one good comment to say about waste management, instead of naughties. They do pick my waste management up because I can't get it down the hill, and I appreciate that. But some other things they're doing, we need to try to get corrected. I think the mayor knows what they are. Mayor, that's a bag of roofing nails. People next door to where I'm staying put a roof on this weekend, and they started Friday. I'm not allowed to call Code, so I called, not your office, I called somebody else that's been taking care of it, so I won't have to bother Judy. They didn't come out and catch them without permits or nothing. They don't have business license, they're out of hot springs. And when they're supposed to pick these up, you know what they are, roofing nails. They left them all over the neighbor's yard, the next-door neighbor's yard. Code, if I understand correctly, I don't want to get caught behind the eight-ball, Code takes their vehicles home every night, and on weekends. How come they don't have to respond when somebody's doing something without permits? Whoop, not supposed to ask the question. It would be nice if they would respond, or we had some way to let them know on weekends, when people are putting in sewers, which I've seen happen in the last four weeks, or water line, and roofs on, things of this nature. They don't go ask the fact, is my understanding, and check it out. But this isn't right. If you want them to pay the previous tax and permits, you gotta have some enforcement. My understanding, Dan has a person that works every once in a while, which is fine. But we don't have a way of getting anyone out there to catch them doing the work. Be nice if you'd figure out a way to do that. I'm not being tacky towards you. But when you get people to get flat tires and stuff because they didn't clean up after themselves, I can't even call anybody and find out who took out permits, so I can call them, ask them, pay for a flat tire. I wish you would think about that, please, sir.
You're getting closer and closer to being deputized, Jimmy, I'm...
Who, me?
Yeah, I've been thinking about it.
I'll do it without pay.
We'll sit right after the first of the year, we'll think about it.
Okay, I'll do it without pay.
We can give him a badge, can't we, chief? All right, Jimmy, anything else?
Yeah, you don't get upset when I come up and put the mic where you can hear him, do you?
No, if it makes you happy, it tickles me to do it.
Doesn't make me happy, I want them to hear.
I understand.
Have a good day.
Thank you. Bobby? Taylor? Bobby Taylor?
Good evening, Mayor, council members. My name is Bobby Taylor. Mayor, I'm just trying to follow up on the manhole covers on East Broadway. I talked to one of your employees, and he told me he had turned that over to a other part of the city to be took care of. And I talked to him backwards and forwards over the phone, left him three or four messages, and I talked to him here last council meeting. And he said, if you want to, he said, you can call them. Well, I called them, they don't know anything about it. And I, the guy there told me, he said, you can call the southern place, and he said, it's probably theirs.
Who, call who?
One of them is a sewer department. The second one I called was the city street department.
I thought you were working with the highway department on that.
No, highway department said it wasn't theirs.
Why?
And...
Why is it not theirs, it's their highway? It's their highway.
Our sewer lines.
On East Broadway, and the highway department said these manhole covers are not their responsibility. I talked to Mr. Mormon, and that's what he told me.
Okay, I thought you were dealing with the state on that, so...
No, I mean, it, and ain't no big hurry about it, but I mean, it's bad that they resurface the street like that, and there wasn't nothing wrong with it to start with. Mr. Mormon told me that the reason they done it is because the money was already appropriated for it, and he said, if we don't use it within a certain length of time, it goes somewhere else, and we can never get it back there over a long period of time. He said, that's the way they work. So, but he fixed the manhole covers for the drainage. That's them white, about three-by-three concrete with a cast iron grate in them. He fixed them, done a good job on them, but these other manhole covers, I don't know who they belong to, I'm trying to find out and see if we can't get them fixed. I know the last time they was done like that, Mayor Hayes done his best to fix them, but they're never gonna be right because it's an afterdo. It's like a dirt dauber been out there. They just gonna patch, but at least it won't feel like you lose a wheel when you hit some of them. That's all I want to do.
You know what 100 block it is? You know what 100 block it is?
What 100 block? From Protho Junction all the way to the railroad track. Some of them is low, way low, and some of them are, I guess they would probably be all right.
Okay, we'll look at it. I'll get somebody to give me a report on it.
All right, and I'll get back with you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
We have to talk about our council meeting in, the second meeting in December. So, our question is, the 24th is Monday, is that right, Diane? And the 25th, of course, is Christmas. So, our options, we could move our next council meeting to Wednesday, the 26th, or Thursday, the 27th. Thoughts?
26th and...
I'm good on either one.
Then we have dinner for Murray afterwards.
Murray's bad, let me look at my... And John's buying, okay, he's already said he'd buy, so... Is anybody going out of town for the holidays? That would be an issue. The 26th is Wednesday, 27th, Thursday, I can do either night, I don't care.